Okay. Council of the Cities of Norfolk is now in session. Would you please stand? The opening prayer will be given by the Vice Mayor, Angela Graves-Williams. Williams-Graves, pardon me. And then please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. Excuse me.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and your many displays of love through tangible and intangible blessings too numerous to measure. For that, we say thank you. Bless the City of Norfolk and bless every citizen who resides within its boundaries and every city employee who works to make our city great. Bless our mayor, our city manager, and this council as we labor together in the calling of public service. During the holiday season, we ask that you bless those who are less fortunate. Give them the comfort of your love in this time. These and all other blessings we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The clerk will please call the roll.
Ms. Graves?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Protogiru?
Here.
Mr. Riddick?
Here.
Mr. Smigel?
Here.
Dr. Whibley?
Here.
Mr. Wynn?
Here.
Mr. Frame?
Here. The motion is to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting, please.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Norfolk City Council Chambers. We're glad to have you here, the benefit of those of you who do not regularly attend our council sessions. The procedure, the process which we will take up tonight, first thing we're going to do is take up a bid process, an invitation to bid, then we'll move directly to the public hearings. We have a number of them scheduled tonight, and a number of you are here on behalf of them. It looks like we have seventeen public hearings. At the conclusion of the public hearings, we'll move directly to the regular agenda. We have a number of items there on the regular agenda. Docket is, we'll vote on all these matters in just the way they are numbered on the printed docket. At the conclusion of our regular agenda, if any member of the public would like to address the City Council on new business or that's something that's not on our printed docket, you'll be given that opportunity. But in order to have your name called, you must have first signed a slip of paper which the clerk has made available in the lobby behind the council chambers, and about, I think, six of you have elected to do that, and we're glad to hear from all of you. So there are no ceremonial matters tonight, so we'll move to the first item on the agenda, which is the invitation to bid. Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir. This is invitation to bid, notice of public hearing scheduled for this day to accept bids for a long-term lease agreement with a term of twenty-five years with a renewal of fifteen years for property known as the Downtown Norfolk Transit Center at 434 St. Paul's Boulevard.
All right, so how many bids have been received?
One bid, Mr. President.
Please read the bid and mark it for identification.
Hampton Roads Transit has submitted a bid for lease of the Hampton Roads, of the Downtown Norfolk Transit Center for twenty-five years with a renewal term of fifteen years to be operated as a mass transit center, subject to terms and conditions set forth in the exhibit and ordinance.
All right, have you marked it for identification?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are there any additional bids offered this evening? All right, if there are no additional bids, I declare the bidding closed. Is there any member of the public who wishes to be heard on this matter? If there is no member of the public who wishes to be heard, I declare the public hearing closed. Is there a recommendation from the city staff regarding the bid received from Hampton Roads Transit?
City staff recommends that the bid by Hampton Roads Transit be accepted in the lease agreement awarded to Hampton Roads Transit.
Okay, is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, I will ask the city clerk to read the proposed ordinance.
I have an ordinance accepting a bid submitted by Hampton Roads Transit for a long-term lease agreement with a term of twenty-five years and a renewal term of fifteen years for property known as the Downtown Norfolk Transit Center. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. See, Mr. Harold here. Okay, Mr. Harold, we got a deal. The council has expressed, first of all, we're very proud of this project. We also had some time to talk about, you know, the maintenance of the facility, and we're expecting that to stay in just as good a shape the day we open it as it is over the past few years that this lease is in place.
Yes, sir. Mr. Ammaruso, who attended your work session, briefed me on the concerns, and we certainly will do our very best. We know that there's a significant responsibility we have to maintain that facility. We also want to encourage our customers to take pride in the facilities as well, but our vision clearly is to be the most efficient and customer-driven transit agency in the Commonwealth. We have work to do, and you have my commitment, sir.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Harold, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Public hearing number one, please.
Public hearing one scheduled for this day to hear comments on the conveyance of a gem lot to DPT Construction LLC of a certain parcel of property located at 1716 Princeton Avenue.
We can call the roll.
Have an ordinance authorize the conveyance to DPT Construction LLC of a certain parcel of property located at 1716 Princeton Avenue for $38,600 in accordance with the terms and conditions of the conveyance agreement, and authorizing the release of the city's right of reverter upon certain conditions. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
You know, I called our Director of City Planning today. I'm just concerned that with these gem lots, that we're selling them, but that we kind of oversee the construction of the properties that go in there, and they're not, you know, substandard or using substandard material. Somebody will buy a house, they have thirty years to pay for, but they'll be upside down in, you know, eight or nine years. And so I know we have guidelines for the smaller lots, but I just want to make sure that, you know, we got an understanding of the individuals that we are selling these properties to, that they're going to give us a good product. I vote aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Public hearing two, please.
Public hearing two, scheduled for this day to hear comments on the conveyance of a gem lot to Terry Self on a certain parcel of property at 2506 Maltby Avenue.
Call the roll.
Have an ordinance authorize the conveyance to Terry Self of a certain parcel of property located at 2506 Maltby Avenue for $6,394.71 in accordance with the terms and conditions of the conveyance agreement. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye, and I spoke with the Civic League president as well.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Public hearing three?
Public hearing three, scheduled for this day to hear comments on the conveyance of a gem lot to Notable Rehab's LLC of a certain parcel located at 2604 Barry Street. Have an ordinance authorizing the conveyance to Notable Rehab's LLC of a certain parcel of property located at 2604 Barry Street for the sum of $15,600 in accordance with the terms and conditions of the conveyance agreement, and authorizing the release of the city's right of reverter upon certain conditions.
And Jason Middleton, Mr. Middleton?
Right here.
Okay, and you heard the comments that we just, that we just made about the construction on these properties, right? And you're here, actually, you're purchasing three properties. Thank you. Three, four, and five, right? You're here to discuss public hearings three through five?
Yeah, I just, I have three. One, which is on 2604 Bar Street.
Right.
And the other one is on 2606 Bar Street, and the other one is 2606 Middle Ave.
Right.
My objective is to revitalize the area, to bring more families into the community.
Okay, all right.
That's my goal.
Thanks, Mr. Middleton. And your address is 44 Tenney's Clayborne Square. Thanks a lot.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Middleton, I've already spoke with the Civic League president and the community, so I'm going to suggest that you continue to work with them in your pursuit of building in the community, as well as I spoke with Mr. Homewood today. So good luck with your project, but the community will be looking at what you do in their community, okay? Thank you. Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Public hearing four?
Public hearing four, scheduled for this day to hear comments on the conveyance of a gem lot to Notable Rehab's LLC of a property located at 2606 Barry Street. Now have an ordinance authorizing the conveyance to Notable Rehab's LLC of a parcel located at 2606 Barry Street for the sum of $15,600 in accordance with the terms and conditions of the conveyance agreement, and authorizing the release of the city's right of reverter upon certain conditions. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Public hearing six?
Five, Mr. President.
Five, I'm sorry.
Public hearing five, scheduled for this day to hear comments on the conveyance of a gem lot to Notable Builders, Notable Rehab's LLC of a certain parcel of property located at 2606 Middle Avenue. And I have an ordinance authorizing the conveyance to Notable Rehab's LLC of a certain parcel of property located at 2606 Middle Avenue for $32,400 in accordance with the terms and conditions of the conveyance agreement, and authorizing the release of the city's right of reverter upon certain conditions. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Public hearing six?
Public hearing six, scheduled for this day for a change of zoning from I-N-One Institutional to Open Space Preservation District on property located at 7620 Sherland Avenue. By seven-zero vote, Planning Commission recommends approval. And I have an ordinance to rezone property located at 7620 Sherland Avenue from I-N-One to OSP District. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Public hearing seven, please.
Public hearing seven, scheduled for this day on the application of Coastal Breeze Car Wash for a change of zoning from C-three Retail Center District to C-two Corridor Commercial District on property located at 834 North Military Highway. By six-one vote, Planning Commission recommends approval.
And Kent, is Winquist is here to answer? There you are. Kent is long with Mr. Toll. I think we're fine.
They have reduced the recyclable order of permit fifty percent.
Right. The recyclable rate she'll be voting on is fifty percent? Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, call the roll.
I have two ordinances, Mr. President. The first is an ordinance to rezone property located at 834 North Military Highway from C-three to C-two. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
And the second is an ordinance granting a special exception to permit the operation of a car wash named Coastal Breeze Car Wash on property located at 834 North Military Highway. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Public hearing eight?
Public hearing eight, scheduled for this day for a change of zoning to modify conditions attached to the property zone, conditional C-two on property located at 2219 Colonial Avenue. By seven-zero vote, Planning Commission recommends approval.
And Robin Thomas is here to answer questions if we have any. This looks like a great project.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I have three ordinances for this, Mr. President. First is an ordinance to rezone property located at 2219 Colonial Avenue to change conditions on property zone, conditional C-two district. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
And the third is an ordinance granting a special exception, authorizing the operation of an entertainment establishment known as Makers Craft Brewery on property located at 2219 Colonial Avenue. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Public hearing nine?
Mr. President, the applicant has requested that this matter be continued indefinitely.
Right, and I see Mr. Nutter here, if you have any questions. Okay. Going to vote to withdraw, is that?
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
You know, this particular project would have a negative impact on Roland Park. And bad thing about it is that by being continued indefinitely, what is being done is being continued after the election in May. And so I really believe that these residents in this community should, you know, realize that there's a game being played in regards to this. And I actually overheard a conversation where one council person said to the other that, okay, I'm going to ask that they continue this thing until after the May election. And, you know, I just hate to think that we have sunk into the level of, let's use the term, Chicago politics, where we try to trick our voters. I got a call from Steve Cooper, who represents this group, and I told him, you know, straight up, that I'm going to support the Planning Commission's decision. This would be an awful place to put housing. But everybody's getting these tax credits, and whenever they see a piece of land, they try to stick it there, not even thinking about who's going to go there, how long they're going to stay there, and what's going to happen to it afterwards. So I'm going to, I'm going to vote no for the continuance, because I see a game being played, and I don't like it.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Well, this is interesting, because frankly, I was not privy to that discussion. I have worked for a long time with the Franklin's and the neighborhood, and I'm not in support of this project. And I'm, I was voting to continue it because I don't ever want it brought up.
Right.
But, so anyway, I'll be interested, but I'll be voting against it again if it is brought up, so aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Well, they're clients of mine, so I have to abstain anyway, but I will vote for the continuation, because we normally give that to people.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Did you get everybody? Yes. Okay. Where are we? Public hearing ten?
Public hearing ten, scheduled for this day on the application of West Norfolk Marketplace LLC for an amendment to the future land use designation in the general plan, multifamily corridor to commercial at 1209 West 26th Street, from industrial to commercial at 2330 Bowden's Ferry Road, and for a change of zoning from I-one Limited Industrial, I-three General Industrial, and C-two Corridor Commercial to conditional C-two Corridor Commercial on property located at 2315, 2401, 2419, 2501, 2517, 2601, 2605, and 2613 Hampton Boulevard, 1250 West 24th Street, 1215, 1217, 1221, and 1225 West 25th Street, 1204, 1207, and 1209 West 26th Street, and 2330 Bowden's Ferry Road. And by seven-zero vote, Planning Commission recommends approval.
Okay. There are three members of the public who have signed up to address the council on this matter. Mr. Harris, Thomas Harris?
Good evening, Mayor Frame, and member of the City Council.
Good evening.
My name is Mr. Harris. I'm from 1231 West 27th Street, Norfolk. I'm here tonight to speak on the shopping center. We are for it, but however, you know, Lambers Point is one of the oldest communities in the city of Norfolk. It had been sliced so much that the name is small. To change this here, make the shopping center West Norfolk Marketplace and not Lambers Point Marketplace is a slap in the face to the residents of the Lambers Point community. We submit back in October to the city planning and developers to change it from West Norfolk Marketplace to Lambers Point Marketplace. We haven't heard anything. We don't know anything. We didn't even know about this being on the docket until yesterday. What's the problem? It's a problem so well along the line that the Lambers Point Civic League and the Lambers Point community like to know. You don't even have anyone on the committee for this shopping center and the Hampton Boulevard Cardinal from Lambers Point. We like to know what's going on in that area, it's like other part of the city communities know. So we're asking that you, the council, take a long, hard look at this name and change it to Lambers Point Marketplace. Thank you. We also have a few people here from the community that are behind me.
Yes, sir.
And we'd like to see someone from the council at our next Civic League meeting in January to let us know what the update is. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Charles Corbett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks to the City Council people and the people in the audience. My name is Charles Corbett. I'm the Vice President of the Lambers Point Civic League. I've seen a lot of things in urban planning and development, such as the, and one of those things is the West Side, initial West Side Marketplace, AKA the Norfolk Marketplace. Now, a lot of times, the things that have been planned, the master plan does come with a hook, and sometimes the hook is ordered to get something else going. Mr. Harris is right. Lambers Point is, as I understand it, in your central Hampton Boulevard plan is a conservation community. And in changing the conservation community, I thought you had special consideration for that, and I think the name change should be Lambers Point. I am, we are in support of the project. However, as Mr. Harris said, for the last several, the thing with the City Council, nobody notified us as they said they would. This meeting that came up today, nobody notified us. We have not heard anything since the project went back to the Planning Committee from your last City Council meeting. And there's been some changes with the project. One unknown thing that we would like to know is what was, the last time we met with the developers, they said they have not obtained all the property. We would like to know what percentage of the property has been obtained. We would like to know what is their capacity building plan regarding the park that's traffic on Hampton Boulevard and delivered to the shopping center. Also, we'd like to know what is the overall impact on the community and the financing, and what funds and land has hit a lot of cases to this project, and the financing of this project, identify the sources. We kind of conceive that this new name, the Norfolk, the West Norfolk Marketplace, is something like a major gentrification program, which have not had any public debate. If you're going to do a gentrification, it seems like it should be a public debate. Now, the last thing I want to say on this issue is that you are not following the policy of the Civic League, the policy of the City Civic League and the partnership that was announced in that same plan, implementation framework. How did we get there? Part three, page 31, was called for a partnership with all organizations involved in that particular area on this plan. Now, I'm quite sure somebody's been to meeting, but Lambers Point Civic League has not been involved. I do have a lot of your experience in urban planning. I have never seen anything like this. And I would hope that you would go back and reconsider the name of the, the name of the Lambers Point Marketplace, and also go back and at least follow your own policy of, and procedures of acknowledging what a partnership is. Thank you. And I'd like to leave for confidence with the clerk.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Tingle, are you here? Thomas Tingle?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm Tom Tingle, 4350 Newtown Avenue in Williamsburg. I'm here representing the developers of the West Norfolk Marketplace project, passing around our presentation that we made to Planning Commission, actually, late last summer, but will not take you through all the details of that, because I think if most council members have probably watched that, that hearing, public hearing at the Planning Commission. And the changes that are, have been made in that are very, very simple. We are here representing Vista Core Advisors. I have with me Dave Clark, who lives here in Norfolk, and Jim Carr, who lives on the peninsula, those are the developers of the project. And we appreciate the Lambert's Point Civic League being involved in the project. We actually met with League three times, starting middle of the, before we met with Planning Commission. And honestly, their input tonight, their input throughout the whole process have been very helpful for us. A lot of the comments that we heard from them, we took into account in the final design of the project that went to Planning Commission. The name that's there right now, West Norfolk Marketplace, also known as West Side Place, is simply a placeholder. is simply a placeholder, and, uh, that decision has not been made. We appreciate their comments. We've had a lot of discussion with the development team about using a place as a, uh, as a marker for the name, uh, but i- in the life of the project, it's just a little too early to come up with a final name for the project. Uh, a couple of other issues that, uh, came up during the Planning Commission was the importance of the Elizabeth River Trail. Uh, this site clearly falls along the trail. Uh, it starts, of course, north of Lafayette River and continues down through downtown and to Norfolk State University. Uh, we have revised the site plan to accommodate the trail in one of two locations. One next to the, uh, Norfolk Southern Rightaway, which I think is the, uh, preferred location of a lot of the trail stakeholders. Another that we had proposed, which actually came along Twenty-Fifth Street, which would be more kind of in the heart of the redevelopment project that we are proposing. Uh, at this point, uh, the recommendation from count, excuse me, from the Planning Commission was, uh, the preferred, preferred route was along the Norfolk Southern Rightaway, but that in the final site plan approval, that would be worked out with public work. So, we are still open to that and have shown both of those options in the plan that's in the pack in front of you tonight. So, again, I will be glad to present any or all of the project or answer questions that council may.
Let me ask you about your timeline. I mean, um, what are, what are your next steps? What are your, those next steps here? If the council were to vote tonight?
Well, uh, in order to close on the property, the developers have to have entitlement, and this is part of the entitlement process, so the next step would be to, to...
When would, when is your closing in?
It would be in two thousand sixteen, would be anticipated.
I mean, do you know what? In the second half? I mean, I'm trying to figure out how time-sensitive this is. I mean, we certainly have a lot of respect for the concerns raised by, uh, the citizens at Lambert's Point. If, if delaying this for a month for more discussion, uh, if that doesn't set the project back, it seems to me that would be something that might be helpful to all of us. Might even help you get a good result.
But, Mr. Tingle, I, I would take a cue right now from, we have a community that is supportive of this project overall and is just asked to name the project after the community, and it's a historical community. I don't understand the naming of a shopping center is it gonna make that much of a difference in how you market this? Isn't it the stores and the things that you guys are gonna bring to it that are really gonna make the difference in the end, not the actual name of the shopping center? But you've got a community that's come down here and has said, you know, that they're supportive of the project, but name it after them. Take a cue and you'll get everybody's support instead of delaying a month on this. I, I, it's a name of a historical community that actually has a lot of respect in Norfolk, and why not just name it Lambert's Point Place or, you know, does West Side, I mean, I know it's a placeholder, but take it.
There is no West Norfolk. I just don't understand what you're doing.
And, and, and the other piece, too, is that it may just be a placeholder, but one of the things that happens with placeholders as names is they become permanent because they appear in documents, and then it's one of those things where, you know, in order for us to change it, we've gotta go back and we've gotta redo all the documents because it's just gone from document to document to document. And so, I would, I would totally agree with Councilwoman Smigle, and, you know, it's the name of it. It means something. It means something to the community, and I, I think that it's, it's worth, you know...
Okay, now, look, th- this is a, um, this is private development. It's, um...
It's not all private. We, we've signed, that land was...
Yeah, we've got...
We, right, we're...
But I mean, the, the...
Too with the...
Look, look, the only, all I'm asking you, we, we've given you our opinion, okay? And if you wanna take a month to think about it and talk with the Civic League, that would probably be a good idea. Or you can talk about, you can think about it right now. Terrific. We're gonna help you all week.
That was easy.
Okay?
Yeah, that was...
Go ahead, you wanna say?
Ladies and gentlemen.
All right, you wanna put it in the record?
We will agree to have Lambert's Point in the name of the, of the project.
Okay.
Okay, and also, could you...
Hey, Amy, wait, that's, that's as far as we're gonna...
Okay.
I mean, I would think that's as far as you can get them to go.
About the Elizabeth River Trail, is, you know, we've worked long and hard on that trail and part of our biking and jogging network in our city, and it's very important that we go around and back behind the center, uh, and I know I had a commitment from our manager, we're gonna make that happen, correct? You do remember that commitment?
Amy, I didn't mean to cut you off. Was that something?
Thank you, that's all.
Um, no, I was just saying that, that the community requested, um, as you stated, where they are at the present time in the project. So, just updating the community, um, so that they'll know where, where they are, um, at this point in the project.
Great.
Certainly, we'd be glad to, to update them as the project goes forward.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Tingle, there's, there's been an issue that we've seen that's come up about the, uh, organic natural grocery store, and, uh, we received that information primarily from the newspaper about that. At the same time in the newspaper, we also received the information, uh, from what the community's wishes were with regard to that particular type of, uh, grocery store. And that may have a broad appeal, but oftentimes, we seek that, uh, prices are reasonable for the community that's closest, uh, and that it's a place that the community that's closest, uh, would actually be able to use and not, in turn, force that community to go elsewhere where they, let's say they've been shopping for a long time, uh, and that in, in reality, it remains a, a grocery store desert for them. If you could, at some point, when you do come back or at, over a period of time, uh, give us a little bit more of that concept that you all are looking at. Would I go organic and natural? Sure, I would. I live down the street from Lambert's Point, but the residents at Lambert's Point have asked that there be prices that are reasonable for them, and perhaps at some point, we can figure out what the chain is or who's coming in and that the prices, that they can then, and we can all examine the reasonableness of the prices, the, the freshness of the food, uh, that's something that everyone in the community would be able to go to. It's not just all organic and natural, but also open to everyone that, who may not want natural, organic, or be able to pay those prices. So, if you could give us that reassurance also over a period of time, I'd appreciate that. And I'm sure the community would. We, we can even tell you and the community tonight that the, you know, that the grocery that we are looking at is one that provides healthy food at affordable prices. Um, it's not a grocery that's, uh, in the Hampton Roads Market at this time, so we're not talking about another Whole Foods or another Fresh Market. It is a grocery store that, that focuses on healthy food, that tries to get, uh, not have, uh, foods that have trans fats and, and high fructose syrups. Uh, that's kind of in their, their mission. They do a lot of education in the community about health. They have, uh, fresh foods that folks can take out and take home. So, it, it is providing that, that option, but it is providing it at affordable prices.
I actually, um, because I was, had great interest in this store, uh, actually filed up and went to this store in Charleston, and I would echo just exactly what he said because our neighborhoods need to have affordable, healthy food, and that's exactly what this,
So, it is affordable.
It is, and it's, um...
And if you guys don't want it, we'll take it down in Ocean View because we've been trying to get them to come down there, but they, they...
So, this is a definite asset for this side of town.
Well, maybe that...
For all of our residents, all up and down, because as difficult as it is for Lambert's Point, I mean, I'll frankly speak for areas north of that, we have even farther to go to grocery stores. So, this is something that will draw in people from all over our city, and it will provide options that is very good. So, I, I think it was unfortunate that the newspaper article painted this as something that it wasn't, and I've talked with the, the citizens in Lambert's Point about it, and they're excited about it.
This, this store has a particular mission to bring healthy foods...
Right.
In areas that normally wouldn't get healthy foods.
Right, right.
They even, their, um, requirements for their median household income is different than a Whole Foods, and so it, it, uh, we hope to see actually more of them come through for those of us who can't afford to go to Whole Foods.
Or Whole Page.
Do enjoy eating, and I'm excited for it. I mean, I live down Hampton Boulevard, and I'm excited for it, but the key is perhaps we need to communicate that better to the neighborhood, again, which I think was the first request, so.
Okay.
That could go a long way if we do that.
Thank you.
And Dr. Whibley, thank you for those comments.
You bet.
I have three ordinances, Mr. President. First is an ordinance to amend the city's general plan so as to change the land use designation for property located at twelve oh nine West Twenty-Sixth Street from multifamily quarter to commercial. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
The second is an ordinance to amend the city's general plan so as to change the land use designation for property located at twenty-three thirty Bowden's Ferry Road from industrial to commercial. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Mr. President, I ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
Sure, some discussion that they were gonna put it off thirty days, we've...
No, no, no.
On that, we're gonna go forward, and the community's fine.
All right, everybody's good.
Yeah, aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
And the third is an ordinance to rezone properties located at twenty-three fifteen to twenty-six thirteen Hampton Boulevard, twelve fifty West Twenty-Fourth Street, twelve fifteen to twelve twenty-five West Twenty-Fifth Street, twelve oh four, twelve oh seven, and twelve oh nine West Twenty-Sixth Street, and twenty-three thirty Bowden's Ferry Road from I-one, uh, I-three and C-two to conditional C-two. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you all. Uh, public hearing eleven, right?
Public hearing eleven, scheduled for this day on the application of eighty-four twelve Shore Drive Development LLC for a zoning text amendment to section twenty-seven dash twenty-six Taylor's Landing Plan Development to increase the number of dwelling units and decrease the off-street parking requirements within the Taylor's Landing Plan Development Zoning District, and by seven-zero vote, Planning Commission recommends approval.
All right, there are three, uh, folks who have signed up to address the council on this matter. They're all proponents. They're here to, two of them are here to answer questions if anybody has any. I'd read your names out, but I, I can't read the writing. It's, but, but one's Bobby, and one's John, and one's Gray. How about that? Okay? All right, call the roll.
An ordinance to amend in section twenty-seven dash twenty-six of the zoning ordinance of the City of Norfolk nineteen ninety-two so as to increase the maximum number of dwelling units and reduce off-street parking requirements in the Taylor's Landing Plan Development District required. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigle?
Just wanted to say we appreciate the investment that's gonna be made over here. Uh, there was some minor opposition from some community members that were worried about some additional high density, but as the Civic League, um, discussed with this, that there's a need to grow population over on that end so that we can attract, um, some retail in that area because of the water situation, and the development also includes some, uh, retail components, which I think is exciting for, um, that side. Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Public hearing twelve.
Public hearing twelve, scheduled for this day to hear comments to amend section fourteen point one dash one thirty-seven of the Norfolk City Code so as to change the voting place of the Ocean View Center Precinct. And I have an ordinance to amend section fourteen point one dash one thirty-seven of the Norfolk City Code so as to change the voting place of the Ocean View Center Precinct. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Public hearing thirteen.
Public hearing thirteen, scheduled for this day to hear comments on authorizing the land disposition and development contract to be entered into with Luna Development Services LLC and authorizing the conveyance of parcels of real property to Luna as provided in the LDDC.
Ask a couple of questions before you go. You know, when I looked, uh, P- PH thirteen, there's no explanation about it in there, and, now, didn't we take a million dollars out of the budget that was supposed to be going to them and reprogramming? Oh, is this for, is this?
This is not church street.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
I have an ordinance authorizing the land disposition and development contract to be entered into with Luna Development Services LLC and authorizing the conveyance of parcels of real property to Luna as provided in the LDDC. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Public hearing fourteen.
Mr. President, the LSE has requested that, for this item to be withdrawn.
All right.
Okay, so the motion is to withdraw. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Public hearing fifteen.
Public hearing fifteen, scheduled for this day to hear comments on approving the terms and conditions of a lease with Norfolk NATO Festival, Inc., for cer- for certain premises located at thirteen sixty-one and thirteen seventy-one Hanson Avenue, Norfolk, Virginia, and authorizing the execution of the lease. And I have an ordinance approving the terms and conditions of a lease with Norfolk NATO Festival for certain premises located at thirteen sixty-one and thirteen seventy-one Hanson Avenue, Norfolk, Virginia, and authorizing execution of the lease. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Public hearing sixteen, right?
Public hearing sixteen, scheduled for this day to hear comments on approving a lease agreement with the Beacon Light Civic League, Inc., for a portion of the property known as the Berkeley Neighborhood Multi-Purpose Center at nine twenty-five South Main Street. And I have an ordinance approving a lease agreement with the Beacon Light Civic League, Inc., for a portion of the property, property known as the Berkeley Neighborhood Multi-Purpose Center at nine twenty-five South Main Street in the City of Norfolk. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Public hearing seventeen, please.
Public hearing seventeen, scheduled for this day to hear comments to amend and reordain sections one and two of the capital improvement program budget for the fiscal year twenty sixteen so as to establish funding for additional capital improvement projects in the amount of thirteen million five hundred thousand dollars.
Call the roll, please.
I have an ordinance to amend and reordain sections one and two of the capital improvement program budget for the fiscal year twenty sixteen so as to establish funding for additional capital improvement projects in the amount of thirteen million five hundred thousand dollars and to provide the funds, therefore, from the issuance of bonds. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Thank you. R-one, please.
R-one is an ordinance accepting a grant award of one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Development Services to assist the Community Services Board's consumers with intellectual disabilities and moving from institutional settings into more independent community settings and appropriating and authorizing expenditure of the grant funds.
Just a second. Ellis, did you wanna say something? Ellis James, did you wanna speak on R-one through five?
They can go ahead, I'll follow them.
If, if that's okay with you, it's okay with us, okay? All right, um, we're gonna, are you, okay, you wanna address the council on them, on this matter?
Uh, yes, sir. Before you tonight, there's an ordinance to accept several new grants and funding streams totaling one point nine million dollars for the Community Services Board that expands services to some of our most vulnerable citizens. With the support of the city, we are excited to see the services and resources in our community continue to expand to meet new and emerging demands and to fill gaps in the system. Last year, you provided us with support to assertively participate in the Governor's Access Program. We have served four hundred and fifty-eight persons in this program since January, generating more than three hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars in revenue.
Okay, you're winning, so, okay, okay, we're gonna do it, all right?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and your, and your name is?
Jackie Shady.
Okay, Jackie, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Ellis, you wanna? Ellis James, please. No, you're winning. Okay, Ellis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Members of council, Mrs. Graves, our Vice Mayor, and Mr. Jones, my City Manager. Um, my name is Ellis W. James. I reside at twenty-twenty-one Ken Lake Place here in the City of Norfolk. I would like to call attention to R-one through R-five, please. Rather than to take up your time, these five items are extremely important to our city. I took the time to, uh, speak to the police chief. And I'm not speaking for him now, but, uh, I asked him specifically, was there any aspect of these five grants that worried him or created a problem, and I think he and I are on the same page. There are so many positive things that will come from these five grant items. And once again, I didn't wanna take your time to speak on each one, but I think it's extremely important for the council members to clearly understand that there are people and taxpayers in this city who support this activity. and taxpayers in this city who support this activity. It will address the needs of many among us who are the neediest. It will address the issues of homelessness. It will especially, in my view, address the question of helping our police department with an issue that is so difficult to come to grips with when you're talking about the interaction between the police officers and the police department and the citizens. I would urge you to vote for each one of these in the affirmative, and I wish you all a very blessed Christmas season. And, Mr. Mayor, please?
Oh, oh, oh.
No fire in the fireplace, please.
I understand.
Okay.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt Ms. Graves.
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogero?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Wen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R2.
An ordinance accepting a grant award of $200,000 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Development Services to expand the number of consumers assisted in the Community Services Board's program of assertive community treatment, and appropriating and authorizing expenditure of the grant funds. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt Ms. Graves.
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogero?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Wen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R4.
An ordinance accepting a grant award of $305,295 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Development Services to support the continuance of the Community Services Board's crisis intervention program, and appropriating and authorizing the expenditure